All the order, put for lead jokes.
The United States of America.
Well, they are fascinating absent, councilman, councilman, they make absent. Can I get a motion to appoint a temporary pro temp? Mayor vote in.
I vote, what was that?
Move, you move.
I move.
Thank you.
I move, Tammy.
No.
I second Tammy's motion.
You guys, no.
Can I second your motion?
Okay.
I think he did that last. Then being all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Smoke and carry.
Do I have a motion? For approval of agenda?
I'll make the motion.
A second.
Any addendums to it?
I don't know any. Do you, do you know of any?
I have none, so. We approve, all in favor of approving, all in favor of approving the agenda?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Communication from citizens. There is none there. Consent agenda for approval of minutes of October twenty second, two thousand twenty four. Approval of bills, October twenty three. Through November twelve, twenty twenty four.
We approve the consent agenda, the minutes, October twenty second. And the bills, October twenty third through November twelfth, all of twenty twenty four.
I'll second it.
Discussion? Very no discussion, all in favor of approving the minutes and the bills. Signify please.
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. No public hearing. Presentation from citizens. None. So we go to resolutions. First one is resolution twenty four dash zero zero six. Sent the memo out. This is for a, actually, this was a change of bill. Resolution twenty four zero zero six relates to a grant for the Department of Homeland Security for computers, MDTs for the patrol vehicles. It's a hundred percent grant covering those. So I'll read it out. For record, a resolution authorizing an increasing of the FY twenty twenty five budget revenues expenditures for the town of Shoshone. Whereas the governing body, the town of Shoshone passed a budget resolution for FY twenty twenty five, including expected revenues. And whereas the governing body of the town of Shoshone recognizes revenue estimates from on-tended sources are not budgeted. And whereas the governing body of the town of Shoshone recognizes Shoshone Police Department applied for and was awarded a grant in the amount of seventeen thousand five hundred and fourteen dollars from Wyoming Office of Homeland Security for the purchase of two mobile data terminals, MDTs. And whereas the governing body of the town of Shoshone recognizes that increases in expenditures arise from time to time due to unplanned expenses. And whereas the governing body, governing bodies of the town of Shoshone recognizes that expenditure increases commensurate with unexpected revenue or revenues in excess of budget as a zero somehow coming in fiscal year budget. Now therefore be it resolved by the governing body of the town of Shoshone, authorized the town treasurer to increase the budget of revenue of following line items. In the amount specified commensurate with revenues received in excess of budget. Ten thirty eight, one forty DHS grant, seventeen thousand five hundred and fourteen dollars. And expenditures for the following line items in the specified, ten fifty four, seven forty one, capital alley equipment, seventeen thousand five hundred and ten.
I move we approve resolution number twenty four dash zero zero six.
I'll second it.
Discussion? When will these computers be in? Uh, probably December. Of next year?
This year.
Okay. That's soon. That's the one thing we order that actually comes in within, you know, a reasonable amount of time.
And what vehicles will we put?
Uh, so the ones that we originally purchased two and a half, three years ago were refurbished, outdated ones just to get us to have those. So these will replace, one of those will replace that. Uh, and then one of them will go in the new vehicle that is ordered, so that one will be all brand new and then one will replace the current one, our oldest one that we have, it's. Okay, so what will we do with the old ones? Sell them to Lander. Okay. Cause they're trying to get MDTs, they're trying to follow our lead. Okay, I'm just. So we'll, we'll sell two of them to Lander. That's the plan. Okay. Any more discussion? Call for the vote?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Resolution twenty four zero zero six has passed. Next item, resolution twenty four zero zero seven. Twenty four zero seven relates to training costs and other, uh, costs related to bringing a new SRO up to speed as far as equipment and whatnot. Uh, that was now budgeted as part of the school, um, so it modifies the revenues from the school and also modifies the expenditures that were utilized to get the SRO going, so it's another one for one. Uh, resolution number twenty four dash zero zero seven, uh, resolution authorizing an increasing of FY twenty twenty five budget revenues expenditures for the town of Shoshone. Whereas the governing body of the town of Shoshone passed a budget resolution for FY twenty twenty five, including expected revenues expenditures. And whereas the governing bodies of the town of Shoshone recognizes revenue expenditure estimates for hiring and training of a school resource officer are unknown when budgeted. And whereas the governing body of the town of Shoshone recognizes the Shoshone Police Department employs a school resource officer for FCSD number twenty four and is reimbursed for payroll and training costs by FCSD number twenty four. And whereas the governing body of the town of Shoshone recognizes that reimbursement from FCSD twenty four has increased commensurate with expenditures for employment and training in excess of FY twenty twenty five budget. And whereas the governing bodies of the town of Shoshone recognizes that expenditure increases commensurate with revenues in excess of budget as a zero somehow coming in fiscal year budget. And now therefore be it resolved by the governing body of the town of Shoshone authorized the town treasurer to increase the budget of revenue of the following line items. In the amount specified commensurate with revenues received in excess of budget. Ten thirty three, two sixty five, FCSD number twenty four SRO, ten thousand seven hundred and fifty dollars. And expenditures of the following line items in the amount specified, ten fifty four, two thirty, police training, one thousand five hundred. Ten fifty four, two fifty five, vehicle gas, low service, one thousand six hundred and fifty. Ten fifty four, three sixty, MDT, one thousand one hundred. Ten fifty four, four fifty, firearm training and ammunition, two thousand five hundred. Ten fifty four, six twenty four, camera monitoring, one thousand. Ten fifty four, six twenty five, uniforms, three thousand. Have a motion?
I'll make the motion.
Second.
Motion has been made, second discussion? What is MTD? Uh, mobile data turtle. Okay. That's just what they. That's a nice way to put it, okay, that's answered my question. And the training will be when? He's already received it, so we expended our budget. It's already been spent, okay. So we thought the school was gonna pay it for, but we paid for it and they're reimbursing us, so. Okay.
Or just kind of balance on the paper.
Yeah, they're paying us back the extra ten thousand, whatever, then fixing the line items that we didn't anticipate spending on the SRO. Any more discussion? Call for the vote?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Resolution twenty four zero zero seven has passed. Next item. Resolution twenty four zero zero eight. Uh, this relates to senior housing and, uh, repairs, upgrades, uh, discussed a couple of meetings ago. Uh, resolution twenty four dash zero zero eight, a resolution authorizing increasing FY twenty twenty five budget revenues and expenditures for the town of Shoshone Senior Housing. Whereas the governing bodies of the town of Shoshone passed a budget resolution for FY twenty twenty five, including expected revenues and expenditures, including the Senior Housing Fund. And whereas the governing body of the town of Shoshone recognizes the need for replacement of equipment and repair of housing facilities. And whereas the governing body of the town of Shoshone recognizes that senior housing operates as a revenue generating fund, independent of the general fund. And whereas the general, the governing body for the town of Shoshone recognized the current balance of the senior housing fund is sixty four thousand three hundred and sixty eight dollars. And whereas the governing body of the town of Shoshone recognizes two apartments were recently vacated and the need of replacing carpet just over twenty years old. And now therefore be it resolved by the governing body of the town of Shoshone authorized the town treasurer to transfer from senior housing savings into the FY twenty twenty five budget. Line items seventy, thirty one, one seventy, savings transfer, eight thousand dollars. And expenditures with following line items in the amount specified, seventy, seventy, two fifty, repaired maintenance, eight thousand dollars.
Now if we approve resolution number twenty four dash zero zero eight.
I'll second it.
Discussion?
And I have, this is carpeting for, for two full apartments.
Correct. Is it carpeting or is?
Oh, sorry. Placing the carpeting with laminate or?
LVP. The one's been done.
Okay.
Uh, H has been done. And now, uh, Joel's going back and forth with getting B. My boy done. So. What's available? And the cost, they've already quoted him, so the cost will be the same. So. Now we're just waiting. But they're supposed to have it done before the grievance movement. So. And they're supposed to be here. Last size where it was like fifteen.
Oh, this one? This is Carl and Corinne?
Hmm, yeah.
Yes. That's two days.
I know.
I just put some of that down. It goes down quick, well, they've made a lot of, I put some of that down like, oh, twenty years ago, they sure have made it nicer.
This is cooling down?
No.
Floating.
Floating.
No, yeah.
Okay.
And they come now, the ones I used was, uh, he's uh, vinyl. Vinyl planking, cause it was, it's a hundred percent waterproof. It went down fast.
Yeah.
And it, it's like rubber backed, all rubber seams, so you.
Same thing.
Yeah, it's.
Should I use the glue down?
Okay.
Okay, so same stuff basically.
Yeah, now in H, I know in looking at the materials, just based off having mine done in the materials, same place, um. I noticed they did have to use some of the cream. So for leveling, so, yeah.
Okay.
So, that's it included in it.
Okay. Any more discussion? Call for the vote?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Resolution twenty four zero zero eight has passed. Next is resolution twenty four zero zero nine. Uh, twenty four zero zero nine relates to increased grant funding, um, and modifications to the budget as well as, uh, covering forty, uh, bonuses for Christmas. Resolution twenty four zero zero nine, a resolution authorizing increasing of FY twenty twenty five budget revenues and expenditures for the town of Shoshone. Whereas the governing body of the town of Shoshone passed a budget resolution for FY twenty twenty five, including expected revenues and expenditures. And whereas the governing body of the town of Shoshone recognizes revenue estimates from the Shoshone Police Department Highway Safety Grants. And reimbursement from the city of Riverton for shift coverage was unknown. And whereas this governing body of the town of Shoshone recognizes the Shoshone Police Department received an additional six thousand dollars in highway safety funding and nine thousand nine hundred and seventy five dollars from the city of Riverton for shift coverage. And whereas the governing body of the town of Shoshone recognizes the value of employees and the dedication to the betterment of the town of Shoshone. And whereas the governing body of the town of Shoshone recognizes that employee bonuses are not expected, but provide a show of gratitude to its employees when provided. And whereas the governing body of the town of Shoshone recognizes that the current FY twenty twenty five budget has twenty six thousand three hundred and twenty nine dollars in unallocated funds. Now therefore be it resolved by the governing body of the town of Shoshone authorized the town treasurer to increase the budget revenue of the following line items in the amount specified commensurate with revenues received in excess of budget. Ten thirty three, two forty, highway safety grant, six thousand dollars. And expenditures of the following line items in the amount specified, ten fifty four, six twenty six, Y dot safety grant, five thousand dollars. Ten fifty four, one forty, retirement, six hundred dollars. Ten fifty four, one thirty, payroll taxes, four hundred dollars. Now therefore be it further resolved by the governing body of the town of Shoshone authorized the town treasurer to increase the expenditures of the following items in the amount specified. Ten forty four, one fifteen, employed bonus pay, nine thousand seven hundred and fifty dollars. Have a motion.
I move we approve resolution number twenty four dash zero zero nine.
I'll second it.
Discussion? So what I did is the money that, that the Shoshone Police Department received from the city of Riverton for services provided, uh, utilize that for a, uh, bonus for all, all town employees, not just the police department. And I did send a memo that explained it further, I think you should have that back it.
It's a really nice gesture.
I remember seeing it earlier and I thought it was broken out to hear part-time and full-time. Yeah, so I, I, I made recommendations, the recommendation that I put was, uh, to just provide a flat bonus to every, all employees for seven hundred and fifty dollars. Uh, regardless of status, but alternatives were, uh, differentiating smaller amounts for part-time and full-time and.
Eight thirty and four fifteen.
Yeah, would be alternatives, and my recommendation was just to for seven fifty. It doesn't really increase that much for the full-time employees versus what it takes away from part-time, so it, I thought it was better to do it that way.
How many part-time employees you have?
Two. Which is why it doesn't really affect the full-time employees much by decreasing their down to four fifty.
Seven fifteen?
Yeah, well, yeah. If, if everyone could, no, if we decreased it for part-time, didn't make it a black cross support.
Yeah, that's one of those left man too.
How many hours a week do part-time people work? Does it vary? It varies, but close to thirty, right around thirty. Now, in temporary employees didn't, don't count, um, and like seasonal employees don't count for that. It's just ongoing yearly part-time and full-time employees are employed year round. I read in the newsletter that they hired somebody, forgot her name.
Kelsey.
Kelsey, for court.
Courts, yeah.
Or dead. Assistant in the police department in various capacities with the our citations and that, monitoring and reporting of that and then also assist in court, uh, with Gavin.
She's also getting caught up on Spelman?
And then she's all, yeah, Spelman, she also has been assisting the clerk with collections and sending out collection stuff, so kind of a jack of all trades. Okay.
Yeah, we have, um, started to get calls about the collection notices that have been sent out for PD. I had one, one guy last week that, um, now he's searching for where he paid him, they said he paid him. So it's working. And that's a lot of money.
Apparently spending somebody's license doesn't get them to pay their fines, but they get a collection notice.
What did you grab?
So, have you excited what numbers you want? All members?
Okay, with what they want?
I'm inclined, let's go with the chief's recommendation, just across the board.
Yeah. Right here, second.
I'll second it.
Any more discussion? Very well, all in favor of giving a, uh, a seasonal bonus of seven hundred and fifty dollars for all employees? Uh, please signify?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Resolution twenty four zero zero nine has passed. So next item, zoning workshop, schedule? Think, they were close enough, maybe one more should be able to get through it, I think. Okay. Unless you think we need two, but I guess we gotta see how would you honor the first? I know there's a Fremont County Association of Government meeting here on the Thursday, the twenty first. I saw that in the newsletter. And we can do it next Tuesday, the nineteenth, I guess.
No. That procedure.
At seven o'clock? Our sixth. You ought to be here for that.
It's the same thing with anesthesia. Happens to be there.
Some evening next week could be fine by me.
I'm open next week.
I'm open.
Just need eight hours notice, right?
Yeah.
I'm, I'm pretty open, we could do like that six, six thirty-ish.
What's your schedule? The year all week, so it doesn't matter. Then let's pick the best time for you and for you.
And for what's his face.
Yeah, Tuesday, yeah.
What about Wednesday, the twentieth?
Like.
The mayor.
Anything Wednesday? Wednesday, good. Let's go Wednesday, the sixth o'clock, okay?
Let's stand up like Plan Atlas, comes up.
That was twenty in?
Yes.
Partway through that, really? Be nice to finish it.
I think we're pretty close, last I remember, but I mean, I guess we'll see how far we get on the next one, if we have to have another meeting after that, but up before the rest of the weekend.
Well, we should. Get her done before then, I think.
Okay. New business. Council day, you can see. We have, uh, a letter from Mike Demick saying that he needs to resign. But I have a. Do you have a formal letter from him?
Not yet. They were supposed to do that when he got back.
Okay. Got Marshall on the phone too.
That.
I was just letting you know that Marshall's, he couldn't get on the Zoom call, they, they called the phone.
Oh.
So Marshall, do you have any comments?
Uh, no, not really, not at this time.
Okay.
I guess the only question I has, have is, uh, is there, uh, a resignation, has everybody voted to accept it yet?
I have not seen a formal resignation, uh, letter at all, it says, I need to resign, which is future tense. And he'll do it when he gets back.
Okay. Alright.
So. So Marshall, what's your counsel?
Well, if he's gonna re- uh, resign, you just have to wait till, uh, he does that and then accept it.
So we just table this issue right now?
Yeah, I mean, if he hasn't actually submitted a resignation yet. I mean, even if he does it by email and you all see the email, that's fine.
Well, it says, I'm out of country, have no access to a computer to make this more formal, I need to resign my position on the town council due to family reasons. I can formalize this when I get back from Canada, but please let the mayor and council know of this decision, thank you, Mike.
Okay, yeah, I think that's a, a written resignation or count, so you can all vote on to accept his resignation.
I move we accept the letter. The email of resignation.
It's not an email. Second.
Discussion?
This is not an email.
Yeah, it was. It was an email to me.
Yeah. It says on there, there's not an email.
Uh.
It says I have no access to a computer, so.
He sent it from my email.
To your email?
From.
I can read.
Oh, I didn't know.
We lost more than a text. To a D-mail.
Yeah, oh yeah, that could have been.
That's how I would understand it.
Cause I can text, I can email from my phone.
Right.
Yeah. Yeah, he was probably losing no access to a computer to actually do a write down.
But Marshall, you consider this letter of intent, a formal resignation?
I would consider it a resignation.
Discussion? Any more discussion? Call for the vote?
All in favor?
All in favor?
Aye.
I'll say no. It says letter of intent, therefore I think it's not for me. Pass two to one. There's vacancy, so we will declare vacancy for Mike Demick's seat. Next item, way I'm voting, don't. Way I'm is in February, um, and, uh, we'll be in Cheyenne. I don't know what dates.
This had to say in July twenty, oh, that was.
January twenty third, twenty twenty five.
Yeah, this is the twenty twenty five WAM winter workshop business meeting in Cheyenne Thursday, July twenty third. And I guess there must be a full WAM meeting that follows that.
It's the regular. Meeting. Winter meeting.
Okay, usually those are February thought.
Yeah.
Okay.
Lovely to go to Cheyenne in January.
Move we select Mayor Highsmith as our voting delegate for the twenty twenty five WAM.
Discussion? Do we want an alternate?
Just in case something happened to Joel campaign or whatever.
Right, I mean, usually they have an alternate.
Mark, you going? It's kind of.
Thursday, January twenty third.
To Cheyenne.
And they have a boot camp, which I'm hoping, I'm assuming they're doing that.
Well, I think you'll be stuck in those eight hours of training for.
That's what I mean, the training. Yeah, but it was good training.
It was.
That, um. You were getting out of the curriculum in college, that'd be pretty exciting.
It will go Thursday, Friday, Saturday.
Thursday, Friday, Saturday.
If I remember right.
I move we select, uh, Mark Nardina as the alternative.
Any more discussion? Call for the vote?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Please report.
Same motion, very.
Motion, Karen, thank you.
Uh, so October was actually a really busy month for us. Kind of varied, uh, calls for service from DUI to domestics. Controlled substance. Sex assault. Burglary fraud, pretty much hit the gamut of all the different types of calls and services. Printed off those, I forgot to grab those, so you guys should see what I'm working there. Our calls for service were up fifty one percent for the month, sorry, twenty six percent for the month, fifty one percent per year. So twenty three, ninety eight percent increase from twenty twenty two for the month of October. And a fifty nine percent increase for the year. Twenty twenty one, twenty four percent increase and thirty four percent for the year. Uh, we did have another canine deployment. With the controlled substance. Ceased. As well as, uh. Three disorderly conduct, uh, calls for service, so, uh, those are. Disorderly calls kind of a vague, very broad category of things involving people. One was indecent exposure. People were yelling and screaming around town, things of that nature, uh, fighting, arguing in public. And we also have five, uh, public intoxication calls for service in October. Which is really weird, cause I guess we figured we'd have that summertime, uh, October, but. Yeah.
Pretty warm.
Yeah.
Yeah, I guess maybe that's what it was last hurrah. The juvenile problems are, uh, continue to stay minimal, um, which is good. We did have some, uh, dog calls, um, one involving, uh, an animal attack. And, uh. Barking dogs, of course. Resulted in citations being issued. Hopefully that'll continue to maybe get the message across. That's. Pretty much. It, I mean, there was this increase in calls for service, it just. Those months. Um, I would say it was probably our business busiest month of the year, to be honest. I'd have to go back and look, but I think as far as. The types of calls we received and the things that were self-initiated by the officers, uh, together. Had the most amount of calls for the year that I could think of for what a single month. And it ran, like I said, it ran all the way into a different call of it from, uh, drugs to alcohol, DUIs, domestic. Sex assault, burglary, fraud. So it's. Was a busy month.
Election year, I guess.
That's what it was, everyone's like. Get out of our system before the election.
Anything else?
Uh. None of this time.
Next item is Mary Port. We have a letter from. The whatever Transportation Authority.
I believe that was included in your council packets.
Yes.
Here to talk about it, I didn't read it or once.
So we use some of that economic development for the summer fest, things like that. How will that affect us for those programs that we, the talent itself?
So.
Have those brands been awarded yet this year?
They've already been expended.
I'm looking at, so, but they're not, that money's not there for next year.
No, so for, yeah, for next summer, alls we'll have is a TAD funding. Um, that's all that we'll have to be able to dis- disperse out for events and things of that nature.
It kind of sounded like they were asking for any un- unexpended half cent sales tech funds. Is that, did I understand that as?
Yeah, I. I don't think that we should.
I don't feel inclined to.
Get such a small amount, um, as it is.
How much do we have? Couple thousand?
Uh, for this, for this year?
Right, that's left over right now.
Uh, thirty thousand? Or no, we give out eighteen thousand, so.
Yeah, twelve.
So somewhere in that ballpark. But we saw commitment to the, the airport through the end of the year, as well as the, uh, um, ground transportation through the end of the year. Um, so that leaves us with under ten thousand. Give or take, that's not being expended.
I'm not inclined to send any down the road.
I mean, we can still, we, we have money in savings too, um, that we've not spent over the years. That's right around fifty thousand dollars. Um, that we can still use for economic development going forward. So it's locked up in that category of economic funding, so we have to use it for that. But to give it all and not have anything else for return, I don't.
I feel like we could. By keeping the money here. Put it to more impactful use for Shoshone itself, other than sending it to WRTA. It's not that, it's not enough to make a big difference to them, but it's enough to make a big difference for us.
Yeah, they're talking about one point seven million dollars a year for the airport, I mean.
Yeah, this isn't gonna.
Drop in the bucket.
I'm not inclined to send any of that money that way.
We want a motion on that.
Uh, so we're not at an actual item, so.
Okay, we'll just leave that. Okay. Anything else, people?
What about this Wyoming dot com fiber optics?
I was a little confused on that.
I haven't. Did they send us the wrong letter?
Yeah, cause I mean, I'm not, uh, good for pavane, good job.
I think it was more of a conversation that Joel had with Wyoming FOM.
Okay.
And this letter was kind of just part of that in what they're gonna do for the building.
Good for pavane.
Yeah. But they were supposed to be able to, a little bit I heard, um, they were supposed to be able to run fiber optics. In Shoshone. So isn't that underground?
Yes.
Yeah. So.
Thank you.
Don't we already have fiber optics that went to the school, didn't we?
I have fiber optics because I went to the school.
Because when I lived down in California, they went around my property down there. This was for the town, in the out.
That's the last.
Oh.
I don't, I've known people who live on First Street, and it's right across the street from them. They're totally can't get into, uh, range.
Yeah, no, range, this was the alter- alternative.
Yeah.
Cause range said no.
That's just information, I guess we'll wait and see if we get it or not.
Yeah.
Nick, do you have anything to present?
No, well, we were talking about, uh. The airport and all that, but wasn't that during a zoning workshop? Cause I did research that on how they, how Riverton does their, uh, hangars and stuff and. But maybe we were.
It was only, you're right.
Okay, well, so what I did find out, I guess this would be something for everybody to think about. Tweeting on that, so Riverton Airport, you get, I think it was, it was a ten-year lease. But I mean, there's rules, you break the rules, we kick you out. And then you could have three more renewals, or was it four more, I think four more renewals, so a maximum of fifty years, but we could do, we can do anything we want, but. The primary purpose of the hanger has to be for air transportation. As the rules, when you get your hanger, a lease agreement with Riverton. So.
Getting out of storage.
Right.
That's what I.
The, well, it doesn't say you can't throw your snowmobiles in the back during the summer, but it says the primary purpose has to be aviation.
Right.
So we're, we're, we're mentioning like, uh, an apartment upstairs. And a hanger downstairs, I would think, if we were to follow that same model. Means that couldn't really be your primary residence. Now, if you stayed there while you were flying your airplane, the primary purpose would still be aviation. But if it was your primary residence, then that would not be. I don't know what it would, I don't, I cannot think of a way it would adversely affect the town. If that was somebody's primary residence was upstairs of a nice airplane hanger they built at Shoshone Airport. If anybody wanted to, which we were told they were contemplating it. I can't think of how that would adversely affect the town. At all. And, and that might be a model for leasing, ten-year lease with however many renewals. But. In the lease, you know, you gotta keep your five-foot perimeter weeds mode, you've gotta do this, you can't, it can't be junky, it can't be this, or we can kick you out.
Like a hanged dominion.
Yeah, and so, and the other way it is, is so if you build a hanger, if you get a lease and you build a hanger in Riverton Airport. If you vacate that lease, I guess the hanger is yours, you can take it with you or leave it. As the expense, you know, I'd be up to the leasy. To determine if they're taking their building with them or not.
So they only leased the land, not the building.
And it is, but it is also the leasy's responsibility to do the water power, sewer gas. And utility, all utilities are the leasy's. Responsibility.
So what, what is the hanger made out of if you can take it with you?
Well, like steel building, I mean, you have to tear it down.
Oh, oh. Not.
It's like my boss, he ended up getting, uh, he's got a lease up there with a hanger and he ended up putting in. Uh, bathroom and heat and all that, and he's been known to stay up there. You know, tinkering with his airplanes and stuff like that, and they said, well, it's, the primary purpose has to be aviation is there, but I don't. I don't know. I just wanted to get this information out so everybody could let it. Digest for a week, I guess. Cause that was something we were gonna resolve in our zoning. Ordinance is what was allowed and not.
No utilities there at this time.
So if somebody wants to build there, that's their responsibility to get them there.
And the water line that goes. Up California. Stops on Seventh Street. And at that time goes with six inches to a two inch. There's no more. It doesn't have enough volume for another.
Any more service.
Or, or any more services. For lights. You can probably straight from the backside of the school. Where you probably come down. I'm sure California or behind over in April.
I don't know.
Yeah, that one would be difficult. I mean, we have a lift station there off Idaho. Already, so I'm not sure that location wise, there were. I guess. They cut in Seventh Street and lift station by the mushroom farm, maybe. Depends on which one they went.
Yeah, there's.
We have to get a survey, cause I mean.
There's one in Pine, isn't there, right oak? Rush for the school.
It's after school. Yeah.
And so how else would you school let someone tie into it?
That would be, yeah, cause they own that one.
Yeah.
So.
Okay. Thank you.
Yeah, so that's, that's, and I could get a copy of their contract, I'm sure. We need to read it some more, but I just wanted to make, since it was brought up. If we want to allow it or not, that's kind of there, wherever everything's doing it. That's all I had.
Have you got anything?
No. What you?
I don't have anything.
Joel just joined, but we already covered everything.
Apologize for being so late, I tried to make it.
All done, well, make a motion.
Motion for me to go home.
Second. Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Dismissed at, uh. I got seven.
Fifty four.
Fifty four.